Public interest. You're listening to W F P R L P, one oh two point nine Franklin Public Radio. And worldwide twenty four seven at W F P R dot. It's so.
Chris, you all set?
Yeah.
Look, there's Willie.
Hello.
Can you hear the P A?
Hmm?
P A?
I don't know. Can you hear us, William?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Thankfully.
No. All right, that's fine.
I'll do, I'll.
Turn it down.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Oh, geez. Save your voice.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, welcome everybody to the February sixth, twenty twenty three Franklin Planning Board meeting. Uh, this meeting is audio and video recorded as well, as well as being on Zoom. And the Zoom number is three one two six two six six seven nine nine. Meeting number is eight five one three zero six five five six zero five.
Mr. Chairman, just make a note that a member, plenty more members, Willie David is participating, being Zoom tonight.
Co- correct, yep. So Willie, just raise your hand if you want to jump in, okay? Um, I think what we'll do is we'll, um, we'll take care of general business first and then we'll go to five fifteen West Central Street. So, uh, first item for the, uh, general business, limited site plan modification for one sixty Grove Street. If, uh, one of you gentlemen want to approach the mic and give your name and adra- uh, name.
Yes, good evening.
Business?
Our members of the committee. My name is Dave Chiplinsky. I act as the owner's rep for one sixty Grove Street.
Okay. Um, any comments, questions for the board or anything before I go around?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, I guess I'll go to Amy first from Department of Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, they had, uh, I think were in front of us a month or so ago with some field changes. And the board had requested that they file the limited site plan modification with those changes. They've since submitted, um, an amended limited site plan narrative, um, an architectural narrative, and a revised limited site plan. Um, Beta has reviewed the plans as well, and the comment letter is included. Um, there was a few questions that was brought to my attention after the meeting about, um, should this be a special permit as well? Um, talking with town attorney Mark Sorrell, that the special permit was only for the use, um, the marijuana use. And this is just related to the site so that a site plan is satisfactory.
Good, thank you. I, I guess I'll go to Mike from D B W. Mike, you have any questions or comments?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we, when this originally came up, as we talked about the last meeting, we felt there was enough changes here for them to come back to, uh, to go to the board as opposed to, uh, field changes for this. So, uh, we have no comments on what they're proposing. The issue with the sewer, they did submit, um, the sewer extension, um, application to the town. We'd submit something to, um, the town administrator to go in front of the town council. I believe their first hearing will be, um, scheduled for the fifteenth of February, so that's moving forward.
Okay. Um, and I guess a quick, well, maybe, going back to you, maybe, uh, when I asked last time, maybe like a neutralization tank, probably to get an alternative sewer from within the building?
We have reached out to the, um, Charles River Pollution Control District, and they, they will have an industrial permit filed through them. So they'll, they'll be able to.
Okay.
They'll have to comply with whatever they're going to require on that.
Just want to double check. Okay, good, thank you. And, uh, Matt from Beta, do you have any questions?
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we provided a few initial comments, uh, on the, uh, the first submission about a month ago. Uh, they've seemed to have provided some more detail on the plans and I think addressed most of those things. Uh, just a couple of notes from the board. We had asked for some detailed grading on the accessible ramps in front of the building. Uh, I didn't see any spot grades for those ramps. Uh, however, based upon the grade change in the length of the ramps, I think it will meet, uh, uh, Architectural Access Board regulations. They just didn't put the grades on the plans.
Okay.
Um, also, just a general note, uh, the building is a mixture of warehouse, industrial, and office. It was a little tough to decipher which portion was associated with which for the parking calculations. Um, if it was up to, it's at the board's discretion if they want to see a little more detailed breakdown of that. We do know that they are providing a hundred and fifty parking spaces and the special permit was for a hundred and thirty eight. Whatever those detailed changes are, isn't going to bring it below a hundred and thirty eight. So it's up to them. They just want to see that documented.
Okay.
The floors, uh, number of floors have been reduced from three to two, but it looks like the overall height of the building is about the same. We just wanted the applicant to confirm that there's no major changes to the overall height in the building for the board's reference.
Mm-hmm.
Just generally, one accessible parking space went away because of the reduction in parking spaces. They're still in compliance. And the zoning table summary, uh, on the front state page, it says three stories instead of two. They have it on the main page as correctly, but minor correction.
Respond to Matt's?
Mr. Chairman, uh, if I can get whatever the comments are in writing, more than happy to address them and take care of them. There's nothing that we heard tonight that, uh, we can't comply with.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, anybody from the board have any comments, questions? Willie? Willie, any comment? Guy?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Um, I, I just had a couple of quick comments, and I think it just could be adjusted at, um, an as-built. The CO tank out in the parking lot, you have it literally up against the parking spaces where the ballards are, if I'm not mistaken. You guys are looking at me blank. That's, yeah, who's going to respond?
Yeah, no.
All right, um, I, I just, I, for safety purposes, the, the ballards are right on the edge of the parking lot. I'd like to see possibly if it's feasible to push the tank in four or five feet and leave the ballards where they are. And then.
I think we just want to understand where you are, sir.
Sure. The back parking lot?
Oh, the CO two tank.
The CO two tank, correct.
Sorry, that's a different thing.
No, no.
Yes.
Where that's located so close, I'm just fearful of, uh, snowplows, trucks, front end loaders. Push that tank inbound a bit. And if you could put ballards possibly on the opposite side, because people have a tendency to drive over curbs lately and wipe out buildings. So I think, uh, it would be most beneficial to have that boxed off.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's not a problem.
And I'm not sure, but I've done these in the past. I've had to put fences around them to keep them safe, so I'd like to possibly see a fence around this tank. For, for, you, they're going to be, you're going to be looked at. I think the state mandates it as well at some point.
There is a regulation, we will have a six-foot-high fence.
Okay, all right.
Surrounding the, uh.
Perfect.
The tank plus we'll do the ballards.
Great, thank you. I just fearful of a snowplow or somebody clipping it.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Uh, Greg, excuse me. Uh, what size ballards are they going to use?
Six inch, Willie.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. That's all I had. Anybody, everybody in agreement with that? Just for safety, okay? All right, so we don't have to vote on this, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we have to because Willie's not, so we'll do a roll call vote. So make a motion to approve the limited site plan modification for one sixty Grove Street?
May I make a, um, suggestion on some conditions of approval? To incorporate any outstanding conditions on the Beta memo dated February first, twenty twenty three, along with adding, uh, spot grades, uh, for the plan, ADA ramps, as noted in today's discussion. And, um, your comment about moving the CO two and adding a fence around with, and surrounding with ballards.
Yep.
That was just a little hard for me to hear. So it's, uh, the Beta letter?
Yep.
It's the ramp spot, uh.
Spot grades for the ramp?
Yep, and the fence and.
And the ballards and fence around the tank?
Correct. And shift the tank inbound, you know, four or five feet. So you have a little bit of space.
I don't think we have the Beta letter, so if we could get that, that would be.
It's online, but I, I can get it too.
Thank you.
Okay. So do I made a motion, do I?
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, roll call vote, so Greg Rondo?
Yes.
William David?
Yes.
Rick Power?
Yes.
Jennifer Williams?
Yes.
That's where we're standing, yes.
Okay, good, you're all set. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Love, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, the second item of business would be, um, a discussion for Panther Way, uh, an over fifty-five development study.
Can I make a suggestion or suggest that you do the guidance first?
Oh, um, yeah, you know what? Let's do it that way. Hold on one sec. I'd like to actually just, let's go to item C, which is a Form H for Amigo for Washington Street, if somebody's here or somebody's online. No? Okay. Well, we'll, we'll move forward anyways with, uh, Amy from Department of Planning.
Okay, for, um, Amigo, so they've, um, filed the final Form H, um, that was approved back in June of two thousand nineteen. Um, they did come in, in August, um, twenty second, twenty twenty-two, um, for a partial Form H. And Beta at the time had put together a letter of some, um, minor outstanding items that they needed to complete. Beta's since been out there and has provided, um, a report of the items.
Okay. So I, I guess I'll go to Mike from D B W. Um, Mike, any question, comment?
We, we didn't have anything outstanding. Uh, Beta had done the site inspections and, uh, I defer to Matt on any, uh, remaining comments.
Okay, good. Uh, all right, so we'll go to Matt from Beta. Uh, if you could just give a quick run-through, Matt, please?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, back in August, we went out and did a conformance review for the site, and we probably had about twenty, uh, relatively minor outstanding comments, uh, which were documented. Uh, we went back out to the site, uh, early last week, uh, on January thirtieth, and have provided an update, uh, with, uh, the overwhelming majority of everything addressed on there. Um, I think the only thing to note was, um, you know, they've eliminated the security gates from the project, so obviously those weren't installed. Um, the only thing that Beta had outstanding is, uh, they needed to install one additional do-not-enter sign on the one-way coming out. They have one up, and they have a one-way sign on the other one, but they need to install one more sign. The sign is on order, it's my understanding, it's coming in tomorrow, and it will go up tomorrow.
Okay.
So that's all they had, but otherwise, everything's stabilized out there. They installed the riprap, finished the plantings.
Yep.
Pretty much did everything.
Okay, good, so you're comfortable. Uh, any comments, questions from the board? Jay? No? Willie, any comment?
I'm all good.
Okay. So make a motion to accept the final Form H for Amigo for Washington Street, which is, uh, I believe it's seven forty, Washington. Do, we'll just keep it as Washington Street. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
William David?
Yes.
Rick Power?
Yes.
Jennifer Williams?
Yes.
Beth Whirling, yes.
Okay, uh, we'll go to our next line item for general business would be, uh, street acceptance, which would be for maple tree and oak tree lanes. Um, this will go towards Town Council for road acceptance. If we go to Amy, Department of Planning, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This kind of popped up suddenly today. Um, the Town Council had posted for the public hearing for February fifteenth. Um, kind of had forgot to bring it to the board for the recommendation. Um, these are some, from my understanding, and Mike can elaborate more on it. This is an old subdivision from eighty-seven. Um, the, the town's been slowly trying to take over old roadways that have not been accepted, so they can actually improve those roadways, um, and have rights to approve them, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's my understanding on this one.
Mike, you're comfortable?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for hearing this tonight. The, um, so as Amy mentioned, we've been trying to, um, accept streets, various streets in town over the years. There's still about a hundred or so unaccepted streets in town. We've been working with that. Um, these streets were, the subdivision was originally approved, I would say, in nineteen eighty-seven or so. Um, uh, we had the milars, um, in hand, um, and we reviewed everything with the town attorney. Everything's been, uh, it, it's good to go. Uh, we're going to get in front of the Town Council, but for the process, it does need a recommendation from the, uh, Planning Board to accept it before we go to the Town Council.
Okay, good. All right, I make a motion to, uh, send this along to Town Council for the street acceptance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote?
Yep.
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
William David?
Yes.
Rick Power?
Yes.
Jennifer Williams?
Yes.
Beth Whirling, yes.
Good, thank you. Panther Way. Uh, next, uh, agenda item would be a discussion for Panther Way. It's for an, uh, over fifty-five development study. Uh, somebody's here to approach the mic or the desk and give your names, please?
Good evening. Um, Brad Chaffee, Camford Property Group. Uh, we're the developer and builder, uh, at Panther Way. I guess on the first phase of it, the commercial building is up right now. Um, with me to my left is, uh, Gino Carlucci from P G C Associates, um, and also work at Drove from United Consultants. Uh, a few months ago, we were in front of a tech review, just with a, a concept and an idea of a senior housing village on the, um, I guess behind the, the building we're currently constructing. Uh, it was well-received, and so part of, um, the next step of the bylaw is really to come to the Planning Board with a concept and kind of what we're thinking, get feedback. Also, um, Mr. Carlucci presented a report just to show a, uh, demand for the need in the town, which is also part of the bylaw. So really, just an open discussion tonight. Obviously, there's no engineering done or anything like that, just a layout plan, some ideas. Um, really here to get feedback from everybody. So, uh, I guess just in your packet, we have the report for Mr. Carlucci. We also just have this layout, um, that shows forty-six townhomes. Uh, I believe there's ten single families and eighteen duplex styles. So, you know, mostly, we're, we're working, we've talked with, um, the Town Planner, Amy Love, just about trying to integrate some more ranch homes in here and what we can do that, you know, can really help, uh, I guess, senior living and what they're looking for. But the style of homes, masters on the first floor, if they do have an upstairs, small two bedrooms, just a bathroom if they have, you know, someone over to visit or an office away. So pretty much, I guess, what you guys would expect from a plus fifty-five, uh, senior village. And, um, yeah, so if you guys, if the board doesn't mind, pass it over to Mr. Carlucci and give you a brief on, on the report.
Sure.
If you could, please?
Okay, thank you. So you have copies of the report. I'll just, uh, briefly go over what I consider to be the highlights. So according to American Community Survey of the U S Census, the Franklin population in twenty twenty-one was thirty-three thousand fifty-seven. The most, uh, uh, the biggest cohort in that, uh, census was the forty-five to fifty-four age group, and the second biggest was the thirty-five to forty-four age group. So obviously, over the next twenty years, all of those, um, all, everybody in that age group will be over fifty-five. Uh, in twenty fourteen, M A P C did a population projection indicating that, um, the fifty-five and over, uh, population, which was, uh, about sixty-three hundred in twenty-ten, would almost double to twelve thousand ninety-nine by twenty-thirty. And it would equal about thirty-five point eight percent of the total population. More recently, uh, for the Franklin Public Schools, another demographic study was done by McKibben Demographic Research, and they found that even, uh, they projected an even greater percentage of over fifty-five for Franklin, up to thirty-eight point nine percent. And actual figures show these projections to be on track. In twenty twenty-one, the over fifty-five population had increased to just under nine thousand, so that was a fifty percent increase from twenty-ten. Uh, furthermore, the housing stock, uh, right now, about twelve and a twelve point three percent have one or fewer bedrooms, and another twenty-four percent have, uh, two bedrooms. Also, the housing units by number of units in the structure, and the reason I indicated this is because generally, uh, older, the older population, uh, benefits from having, uh, um, multi-unit development with, uh, management for maintenance and such. So, uh, currently, there's about, only about twelve percent in you, in complexes of, uh, ten or more units. So, uh, also, American Community Survey, right now, almost thirty-five percent of households, the previous projection was, uh, or previous statistic was persons, but under, in households, M A P C projects that number to increase to, um, from, uh, let's see, from thirty-eight hundred in twenty-ten to seventy-five hundred in twenty-thirty. So that indicates the need for more, more housing to, um, meet the needs of that older population. Uh, right now, also, the, uh, I have some, uh, income statistics in here, but I think the most important part of that is that, uh, twenty-six percent of how, of persons sixty-five and over are in non-family households, meaning eight hundred and fifteen females and two hundred and five males are living alone currently. So, um, the, um, the, uh, increasing demand for senior housing isn't a Franklin issue. Uh, I included as an appendix to the report a Boston Globe article from July, uh, indicating that many people are kind of stuck in their big, big houses because there's not enough inventory for, uh, downsizing. Also, uh, specific to Franklin, there are a lot of amenities for seniors, so it's an attractive place. We got Gadra, we got a great senior center, we have lots of opportunities between the schools and Tri-County and Dean. Uh, there's a lot going on. So, um, that's the, uh, the summary is that there, there definitely seems to be strong demand for over fifty-five housing. If you have any, any questions, uh, be happy to address them.
So basically, you're saying we're all getting old?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay. Um, I got, I guess we'll go to, uh, Amy to Department of Planning if you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, um, Brad Chaffee here, um, presented the, um, housing market study, which is a requirement if they were to move forward with, um, the over fifty-five bylaw. Um, for any over fifty-five bylaw, we are over the two point five percent as it is, um, required in that bylaw. And the Planning Board, when a filing comes in, would need to waive that to allow it to move forward. Um, uh, Mr. Carlucci here has provided the study for Mr. Chaffee, and they've brought it in front of the Planning Board. I'm not sure if they're, there wouldn't, this is more of a discussion, I think, to get, um, the feel of the Planning Board, if they would like to see some over fifty-five housing in town, or, um, if, if they have more questions on it.
Okay. Um, I, I mean, I have a couple of quick questions, but we'll go to the rest of the board first, if anybody has any questions or comments, Jen?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, it's a discussion, so I don't, I don't have too many questions per se. I mean, I think there's an obvious need for over fifty-five housing. I know, I look across the street, my neighbors, it's the exact situation you talked about. A lot of folks who are over fifty-five that are stuck in their homes because they either have no mortgage payment or they have nowhere to go because they can't downsize. Um, I think it is a need in town, and it is a growing need in town. Even if it isn't severe today, it will be tomorrow, right? Um, so I think it's great to, to start looking at this, um, hopefully with a, an affordable, um, aspect to it, because, uh, nobody can afford to downsize if they, you know, don't have a mortgage payment or have very low mortgage payment because they have been in their big houses for years. So it'd be great to see a significant affordable housing, um, portion of this. Uh, with this particular site, the, I know the layout is conceptual, but are you proposing, uh, should something like this move forward, to clear cut the entire site? I mean, it's a extremely heavily wooded, it's a heavily wooded site, the whole thing. Um, so I guess personally, I would just have reservations about clear cutting, you know, a very densely wooded site to, to create this type of development. That's all. Thank you.
Beth?
Just follow up on Jen's comments. So as part of the fifty-five-plus senior village overlay district, you are required to have a component be open space, and you are required to have a component be affordable in order to qualify as fifty-five-plus development. So I'd be curious to hear from the applicant, potential applicant, what your plans are for that.
Um, yes, so I guess also part of that, um, they talk heavily on landscape architects. So we actually had a landscape architect just come up briefly with this design. So that, I guess, more than convent, like conventional subdivision, that's a huge part of this. So the clear cutting, all that, we really haven't got that deep into it, but we know, just reading that and obviously Butters and everyone that's involved in this, if you've gone to any of, um, I don't know if this is a good example, but any of the Toll Brothers, like, uh, forget the Plainville, the golf course they went on, they have a ton of landscape. Now, that was already cut because it was a golf course, but it's a huge component of this. And I think the plus fifty-five wants trees, they want privacy, but they don't want big yards. So I don't have a great answer. I don't plan on just completely clear cutting. You see all these things sitting here, so there'll be a heavy component of landscape and how we do that. I'm not exactly sure yet, but.
But I think it, not to intrude your rabbit, I think you have to have, what, thirty percent of your lot has to be permanently protected open space?
Yes.
And then fifteen percent of your has to be units that are affordable, so.
Correct.
And then the design of the site says that you're supposed to make it consistent that all of your space that's open is in one area. So in looking at your plan, I guess my, one of my other questions is, and it was conceptual, your lot is what, mm, thirteen acres or so? It was thirteen?
Rough, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then are you planning on keeping the bus, is it one lot? The bus dispatch lot is part of your calculations for the fifty-five plus, or will you be separating the lots?
That would, that would, I mean, when we did this, the open space, I guess I'll have to find out about whether we're supposed to be all together, but that was calculated, so.
Because that would make it smaller, right?
Yeah, we didn't calculate like that as part of this. We, they're, they're separate.
Okay, now it looks like it's one lot, so, okay.
It might be on this concept, just, but when we go to divide, that'll be like a condo association and that, so. Not exactly sure how the logistics, I guess legally work up, but, um, we did not count that as like the open space part of this.
I guess some of my conceptual questions for you are then on, on your setbacks and things. You have a lot of roadways kind of right up against your property lines. And, and I guess for me, in reading through the senior village bylaw, that doesn't really, it's inconsistent with the, the, the message that's, what's, what's in the bylaw. Couple other questions, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
For Amy. Amy, how many fifty-five-plus developments have been permitted? And how many units have not been built at this time? Do you have any idea on that answer?
Um, as far as I know, they, they've all been built except for, there's one on Chestnut Street that's twenty-seven units. So as far as I know, that was the most recent one, and that was a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Um, I believe all the other ones have been built.
Okay, I think at one point in time, there were quite a few that weren't built, so at this time, we're up to date now.
They wrapped a bunch up. I, uh, before the Chestnut one, they wrapped up, um, Oak Hill Villages over, uh, um, Washington Street. I think that, that one took a long time. That one finally got wrapped up.
Okay.
Uh, a few years ago. Um, and so I believe it's just one left that has not been built. No shovel, only ground.
So in, in my opinion, I, I definitely agree with this significant need for affordable senior housing. Um, I don't disagree in concept that this is not, is a, it's a good idea. I just, I think what you're doing is a lot, um, and perhaps a better configuration with some additional walking paths, maybe some more open space. Um, and you were saying they're two bedrooms, maybe? Two?
Yeah, I mean, just from selling in town and selling different condos and stuff, I think when people are downsizing, it's also important to have their space, right? So everyone likes to have accessible masters, but they also like to have an office, especially now. Most of them still work part-time or do stuff if they're full, you know, some are retired. Um, and then they have grandkids, and they usually like to have a spare bedroom for them. So three-bedroom isn't used like your traditional three-bedroom, but they like the little rooms to have that, so it kind of breaks up the space a little bit, so.
They're going to be larger size?
Um, we're trying to keep these under, so the majority are mall under, these are all under two thousand square feet. So they're like eighteen hundred square feet, nineteen hundred square feet, in that range. And that's how most of them that we're modeling off of are built. So if they were three bedrooms, they'd be very small, you know, they'd be, uh, ten by twelve or ten, I guess, you know, small in the scheme of. or ten, I guess, you know, small in the scheme of, I guess, conventional house, but that's kind of the target, in that range. If you do first floor, you take up a lot of space with the master and stuff all in the first floor, so the first, if they were, they might be fifteen-hundred square feet, which is the size of the condos we build in the center of town. So the only difference is you're gonna have a little bedroom and a bathroom, kind of in a vaulted, you know, attic. So these houses, if they were two, two stories, they're not like your typical two-story up, they're really kind of like a bungalow-style type house. But that's, that's kind of the thought process behind it.
I guess in concept, not bad, just think it's a little large.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think just to piggyback, the challenging part of the site, the way it's laid out, is, is the, the, the topography, you know, the contours of it. So, making sure everything is, you know, as flat as it can be, in the flow, that's kind of why this one, we had a bunch of different kind of ideas, and that's where we landed on this one, was kind of hard to see flat, but conceptually wise, it made the site kind of the flattest, kept all roads from being steep, things like that, so that's why they lined up that way. Just, that's how we kind of arrived at it.
Good?
Yeah.
Jay?
I guess, any thought to like, a, a building with multiple units, to try to increase them to density, or has that not really worked for what your market side showed?
I think there is, but I think as far as, I think the majority of people that are in this market like to have, they're moving from a house, a lot of them like to have their kind of garage in their little side yard, so I think this is more attractive. When, I feel like, when we build something that's more of that, a multifamily, they like to be, not that this isn't in a, kind of a, a active area, but, you know, downtown or something like that, where it's very walkable, too. So, I think the people that we are targeting for this in part of the report tend to like this better, but definitely not off the table to think of it, absolutely.
I guess the only other thing I would say is try to find a way to make the open space a little bit more contiguous.
Yep.
And no one else will see their children's grandparents move out of town, so I'm always supportive of this.
Thank you.
Willie?
Uh, yeah, what would be the average cost of these, Brad?
That's a good question.
That was my question.
It's, I mean, if we have this meeting, you know, if I came in once a month, the next three months, which I'm sure you guys will be thrilled at, I think the price would change a little bit, right? We're also, as you develop and build these, you'd want to keep them at the best price to sell them, but you're also battling your construction costs and laying costs and everything else that goes in it. So I, I'd be, hate to say something and then be held to it, but I think the average around these areas, depending on the size, are anywhere in the mid-six hundreds up to mid-seven hundreds. For, if you think about if they're two thousand square feet, anyone that's selling their existing house in Franklin that has a colonial, that's what they're selling them for. So I think a lot of this report is basically, hey, we're moving out of this house to downsize. But, the affordables, obviously, those would be affordable. I'd like to make them smaller and more affordable, too, so I guess it's just a, it's a moving target with construction right now. So, if construction stuff comes down, then ultimately the price gets to come down, too.
Through the chair, would, would you consider having a higher percentage of affordable units than the minimum?
So this is, in the bylaws, fifteen percent?
Yeah.
Which I believe is the highest affordable probably in the town for anything, right? Especially what we've talked about in other areas and stuff like that, so, I mean, yes, nothing's off the table for any of this?
Yeah.
So that's, again, I mean, we'd absolutely take a look at that, too.
Through the chair, I think, can you get more density in the senior affordable units? If you get either more affordable units or pan to the affordable housing trust, so. There you go, Brad.
Yeah, just, that is an option?
Mm-hmm.
You can, sure.
I like that.
And that goes to your point, Jay, trying to pull it together a little bit more, to get a little more out of it, per se.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, I mean, housing in general, as you guys know, is a problem. So, actually just going through town, driving around, paying attention to what's going on, houses are now going over asking again, there's, you know, multiple offers on stuff because there is zero inventory. I don't know if there'd be anything coming in front of the planning board this year for housing, like, just from knowing what's going on, from a sale perspective, at least, you know, you guys would know more, but it seems, it's just, it's gonna be tough, so I don't know how else, you put affordable components on things, you try to give a affordable product, obviously we want to sell them and not sit on them, so, right, there's a balance in between all that, too. So, hopefully just work together and come up with a product that kind of works for the talent like that. Anybody else?
Through the chair, one more question.
Sure, go ahead, Willie.
Uh, to Brad, what's the length of this road gonna be? Looks like it's gonna be over six-hundred feet.
Yeah, the main road, Mr. David, yes, I would have, just by kind of checking on this, the scale of the Panther Way, that's two-hundred, it probably would be over six-hundred, yes.
That could be an issue.
Okay. So, I will look, yeah.
No, go ahead.
Is there something I can, I guess I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a peek in that, too, just to see if there's anything in there, Mr. David, about the length of the road, what else do we need to do for that while we design, you know, if, if, if we design this?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Willie?
And you see, in the senior village bylaws, it refers to having to meet the requirements of the subdivision roads.
Okay.
I mean, everybody pretty much hit on some line, the open space, the affordable, square footage. You were saying, Brad, one and two levels, potentially?
Yeah, we kind of, if it would be a second level, it'd be, like I said, very small, almost in the middle, you know, like, you know, nothing, nothing of really two stories, because that's obviously not a huge selling point to senior villages, so.
So, yeah, I, obviously, the, the, you know, just the semi-proposed here is pretty aggressive, obviously you hear that, so, not a big fan of the road running up parallel to the neighbors in the backyard, so I think that would be a big one, but I think all in all, yeah, the town's in need of fifty-five and older. Yeah, is it needed for this particular site? We don't know, but you can do, you can run it through and see where it brings us. I think, I think I get the board's opinion that it's, they're like, we need fifty-fives, something that's conducive to the site, that's all.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, anybody else? Willie, you're all set? Okay.
Okay.
All set, thank you.
Don't be making talk, I feel so bad.
Well, tha, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. So go to our last agenda item, which would be seven o'clock meeting, which would be for five-fifteen West Central Street? Introduce yourselves, take care, Matt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you Edward Cannon, for the applicant, Franklin Learning, joined tonight by Manoj Gandhi, who lives the applicant, Frank, from Franklin Learning, Amanda Cavallari from Gary and Hellman, and joining us remotely from Stonefield Engineering is Matt Sekler. Josh Klein wasn't able to make it tonight, so Matt can help us out on the traffic side.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Do you wanna, how do, wanna do this, Amy, you wanna go to you first, or you wanna go to Mr. Cannon first?
All right, it's Mr. Chairman, if you wanna kind of hear the response to our traffic letter, and then gather the board's response on it, it's really a board's decision on what they're comfortable with moving forward.
Okay, yeah, if, if we could do that?
Sure.
Okay, please, thank you. So basically, the response, to the response of the traffic.
Yeah, maybe I could sort of give a universal sort of where, where we are. So, the board wanted sort of the plan to be cleaned up, which was done, and then the board's own traffic consultant rendered their report, which we got just, just before the last meeting. Stonefield took a look at that, and the towns council, Mr. Winter, who's on tonight remotely, I noticed, used the report by M D M to generate the more comprehensive draft conditions, which I hope the board at least has had a chance to take a look at. He sent those to me, and he admittedly said, look, I'm, I'm putting everything in but the kitchen sink, so it's all discussion points, just to forewarn you. And so, I was fine, I sent him back my edits, and he, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but he can, I'm sure chime in, but said, I understand all your edits, he didn't really comment on them, other than saying, I understand your edits, they're straightforward, but I'd like the board to consider them, so I think he wants you to sort of understand that. Stonefield Engineering had a chance to digest the M G, M D M report, sort of responded to that, came up with a traffic management plan, as was suggested by M D M, and M D M had a chance to respond to that, and I'm not sure if M D M is on, they can speak to it as well if they're here, but essentially, to boil down, it was, we understand the comments, and essentially, the data will bear out what's going on. So once this gets operational, once the traffic management plan is in place, once the data is gathered, then, you know, that's what the board can rely on to determine whether or not to go to the additional capacity. So, that's kind of where we are. I anticipated tonight probably having Amanda just sort of maybe take the board through the cleaned-up plan, could have Stonefield take the board through the proposed traffic management plan, which was essentially using the same plan, but marked up for site circulation, as well as some notes, which M D M had suggested be included. And then, I believe Mr. Winter, if we can share the screen, can put on the draft conditions, we can go through the edits, why the edits, what our thinking was, what Mr. Winter's thinking was, and fingers crossed, hopefully, that will be it, but that was kind of what I was envisioning tonight.
All right. So why don't we do this, why don't we go to Mr. Winter first, and get Brian's comments, if, if you could, Brian?
Yeah, happy to, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for recognizing me. My apologies for not being there in person, we have a little COVID going around the house, and out of an abundance of caution, I thought I'd join you remotely tonight.
Appreciate that.
I agree with Council's comments, just in terms of what we've been working on since our last meeting with the board. We have a, an initial peer review letter, a response, and then a response to the response, which for the most part dovetail neatly, there's a couple, you know, comments for the board to discuss, which are highlighted, just in terms of sequencing and when certain things may or may not come in. And the other, sort of a big-ticket item that we were working on was, of course, a draft decision. The board gave us some instructions and some parameters at the last meeting, and of course, with the benefit of our peer reviewers' comments and suggestions, we boiled all those down into a draft decision, and as Council mentioned earlier, and correctly mentioned, my approach is, is not to censor anything before it reaches the board, but really to set the table with, with all the options and choices for you to then pick from, so that you can see everything that our consultant recommended, the applicant's responses, and kind of red-line version of those things, and then obviously, as a policy choice, the board can decide how it would like it to, you know, be when it's voted. And so, now might not be the time, but at some point, when the board is ready, I can walk you through those draft conditions and sort of the mechanics of it, but I will say, at this point, from sort of fifty thousand feet, I think we've captured what the board was looking for on a couple of different dimensions. One is, you know, a T M P, so traffic management, to be embodied on the plan in a written form, so you have that now before you. A phasing plan with certain benchmarks, opportunities for, for monitoring, for reporting to the board. We spent some time figuring out when that would start, you know, when does the monitoring, and when does the, the clock start ticking, basically, at what point would the applicant reach a certain capacity where it would make sense for us to start that clock and start looking? So that's in there, and we also have, you know, benchmarks along that time horizon for when we would do some studying and generate some data to report back to the board, and have our peer review consultant involved, when and how the board would pull the applicant back in to discuss any concerns that may or, may not be revealed in that reporting, and then what to do about it if, if any concerns are noted. And so, I think we've captured all those benchmarks in there, and of course, the devil is in the details, so we can talk about that when the board's ready, but I think we're on the same page in terms of what the board was looking from, from me and from the applicant's team, in order to tee this up for you tonight. So happy to answer any questions, but I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, good, thank you. We did see an email, was it this morning? An email came back this morning in reference to the traffic report. I mean, I briefly read it, I didn't get too deep into it, but I don't know if the traffic consultant's with us, if he could give us a run-through? It's just because it came in late, and I want to make sure everybody gets their eyes on it. Traffic.
Okay.
Brian, do you know if he was able to attend tonight?
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chairman and Ms. Love, I did inform him of the last meeting and of this meeting, he couldn't make the last one, but he did say that he was gonna be able to join us for this one. I didn't, I don't recognize all the names on the participants list, so I thought he might be there, since he didn't respond to the call, I guess not. But he is aware of tonight's meeting, he was invited, and he did say that he would join us.
Yeah, it, like, like I was saying, it's, it's a lot to consume, and I wanted to get his, I want to get his thoughts on the, on his responses to the traffic report itself, but we'll, we'll wait a few, if he can jump on, but I guess we'll go to the rest of the board, if anybody has any questions or comments, of where we are now, and I guess, if Amanda at one point could give us the run-through, basically on the new layout and just the modifications that would.
Mr. Chairman, can we have Amanda give us the update on the plans?
Sure.
And will we wait to see if we can get the traffic engineer on?
Yep.
Absolutely. So the plan hasn't changed substantially since the last time we were in front of you, we did clean it up a little bit, added the West Central Street, so you could see the roads that were labeled, as well as the private way, and the areas that would actually be paved along the, you know, entering into the site. We have the private cavers that are going around the back of the building, and thirty-three parking spaces, along with the area where, we did leave the cul-de-sac on there, because that's the way the plans are laid out, but we did leave them in green, that will be areas that's undisturbed or already partially disturbed from previous development, which includes the transformer pad and transformer structure at the, at the top of the, of the road. I think that's pretty much it as far as the changes go, I don't think we've really modified it substantially, just kind of cleaned up some of the, some of the additional areas that were in question.
Okay, good, thank you. Well, we'll, we'll start with the board, Jay, any questions, comment? Jen?
I admittedly, I need to review everything, I came in at nine fifteen a.m. this morning, I think overall is interesting to hear, or to see, the initial report by M D M and some of the discrepancies against the original report from Stonefield, but it seems like, at least at first glance, that the traffic management plan and phase and approach might start to stress some of those discrepancies, I just, I think I need more time to digest it.
Okay, good.
Through the chair. In looking at M D M's recommendations, they're asking for, to consider a circular, circulation route that goes behind the building. You guys, or you, your applicant is obviously not in agreement with that from what the statements I read. My question is, the parking spaces, the, the flow would be, they pull in, pull into a parking space, ideally in one of those marked spots with a square, and drop, designated drop-off zone, and then they back out and go back out the same way? How, how much room is there in between the, in the aisle there, between the two spaces?
Standard, standard foot per apartment, twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet? 24 feet? Okay, thank you.
May I just follow up on that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
For Mr. Powell. It's not that the applicant is necessarily opposed to the circular utilization of the site. He does have a lot of experience in these and the circulation on-site and is very confident that with Stonefield's help, that what's proposed will function properly. My comment back to Mr. Winter on the draft conditions where it's not that we don't want to do that, but we're very confident in what we're proposing. But perhaps if the data does flag something of concern, that that might be one of the very first things we consider for mitigation. So that was kind of the thought process on why that was proposed that way.
Is this same concept in use now at other facilities?
Yes.
So the same pull-in, back-out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
To be honest, I did not have opportunity today to read the response that came in and don't feel comfortable moving forward with a decision. You know, at this time, before I have the ability to review everything in detail, I do have a couple of questions, so. The draft decision that's here. In regards to if we decide after the nine-month period that we've reviewed everything and there is, I think, an issue, we can then review it again, however, what happens after we review it and the enrollment increases? Is there the ability to then review it further after that enrollment increases? Or simply the enrollment increases and it's done?
I think the intent is to give the board time once it reaches, so there's, as the board suggested, just simplify. There's two levels, 90 students and then full capacity. The intent is to provide the board some period of time to be able to evaluate at full capacity. I think in drafting that, since I know we won't close tonight, what Attorney Winter and I can work on is basically the same process when the new threshold is reached, which is, the way it was drafted this time was, once, it's on the onus, is on the applicant. Once you get to 90 students to alert the town and that starts the clock ticking on the first sort of evaluation period. And I think we just use that same device when it gets to 100% capacity. I think that's, I think that's the intent. I think we're very comfortable doing that. And I think that we have the time. We can adjust these conditions to reflect that. I don't think that'll be a problem.
Sorry.
So I think it's pretty, yeah, I think it's, I think it's...
Condition two.
F on the document. But, yeah, I was going to touch upon the document after, but that would be beneficial. I thought that's the approach we were going to take anyways. I just had a couple of quick comments and questions, which how the rest of the board feels, I don't know. But if we, the access road, if it's going to be pavers for the time being, I'd like to see gates there, fire department access gate. The adjoining parcel going to the Wendy's, I'd like to see a fence there, not just a gate. I don't want people parking in Wendy's and dropping off and using that as a source to get to the school. So we're at the access point between the Wendy's and the parking lot.
On the access road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Put a fence, some sort of fence there, like a chain link fence or something, just so people don't park in Wendy's and want to run the kids up or any for reason. Want to keep the two sites separated.
Would a gate that we could close and lock be okay?
I'd rather have a fence because they're not, they can crawl under the gate.
Oh, I see.
Just to block it off. So nobody wants to travel up through there.
That should be a problem.
From site to site. And I'm sure the owner of Wendy's would probably appreciate that as well. And I guess the second question would make me feel a little bit more comfortable and if you guys are willing to. I saw on the document that it potentially do one week of traffic. I'd like to see if it'd be possible to do two because I think it'd be that much more information gathered and I think it could help you guys and us at the same time to make a good decision. One week is good, but I think two would really give you a real sound number of what you're really running at.
Sure.
At that 90, once you hit that 90 threshold, if that's possible. I think just could help us make a better evaluation of it for all of us, for all intents purposes, that's all.
That's fine.
Okay, all right. Beth, did you, do we want to touch upon the document? Does anybody have any questions about, do you want to get into the document? Do you have any comments on it?
I mean, my only, my only comment was regarding the capacity of 143 children and 25 staff. Just because condition, is it condition? If we're talking about letter F, condition two, I still believe shall expire after 12 months from the time that the commissioner notifies the board that it has reached 90 enrolled. I guess, but I don't see reference to when it reaches 143 enrolled.
I think we have to, I think Attorney Winter and I have to work on that. But what I envisioned is the same mechanism that we use to start the clock when you get to 90 students. I just think it, the symmetry, it's the same. We just go through the same process. The timeline, we'll, I can talk to Attorney Winter about that. But I agree.
There should be an end period for sure.
Should be an end, but also the board made a good comment last time. It shouldn't be date-driven. It should be capacity-driven. So we'll just notify you when we get to 90, notify you when we get to 100% and then that will start the clock ticking. We have the same sort of process. So I think that's fine. And we'll, I don't think that's clear in this draft, so I think we have some, we're not going to close tonight. We'll clean that up.
Perfect.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Brian Winter from the Zoom world. I think Counsel and I are on the same page here and that's what we tried to reflect, you know, two pause periods where the board can notice a public hearing once after the monitoring and data collection at the 90 and then again in full capacity. So it's in here, but certainly some tweaking and some fine-tuning and polish will be in order. But I hear your comments and I think that's what we're striving for. We just need to do a little bit more crafting on it.
Okay, good, thank you. Willie, I didn't go to you. If you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I had one through the chair. Going back to the road, you know, behind the building with the pervious pavers. They said that if there's an issue with parking, circulation, that they could go behind the building in the future. But that cannot be done because it's pervious pavers. You know what I mean?
How so? How so wouldn't be able to access with pervious pavers?
Well, you're talking about sending the cars around the building over pervious pavers. That's there only for emergency vehicles only.
The pervious pavers are another way to minimize some of the impervious structures that are out there. That's an area of conservation concern. So the pervious pavers was another way to have a stable area for traffic to go over in the event of that, so it's suitable for fire truck capacity. The pavers aren't the three-by-three, I don't recall the exact dimensions on them, but they're not your small-size pavers. They're fairly heavy-duty blocks that were part of the initial submittal that are capable of handling fire truck loads. So having cars, if they have to go back there or travel back there in the event that that's required based on capacity or circulation issues, it's something that's fully capable of handling vehicle loads.
Okay, that's fine. But through the chair, Greg, I thought that was not allowed in our bylaws.
Well, that's something we got to look into because now it's considered a fire access road.
Exactly.
And we've allowed that, but we've also allowed that down the street at Cook's Farm, I believe, on the gutter mouth on the right-hand side as a modification, if I'm not mistaken. As they pulled up on the right-hand side, it was part of that. But I was going to defer it back to Mike if there's any objections to utilizing this access road in the back. That's why I want to gated it so it's not used on a daily basis. And if it comes back that after two weeks of evaluation that we need that road, yeah, that road's going to have to be paved as a form of, because it's going to be used daily. So it's going to, just for all intents purposes of the use of the site, you're going to want to have that paved. But going back to the pervious pavers, Mike, what's your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in reference to the project down the street, I think originally we were going to do the shoulder area on the side of the road as pervious pavers. I think that changed and towards the end they decided to pave it and they came back and showed that the drains were going to work. So I don't think that was ever installed, if I remember correctly. I don't, I want to say I don't believe it's in the bylaws that it's not allowed to use the permeable pavers. But I do think the board in the past hasn't allowed it for pavement, like pervious pavement and for everyday use, that sort of thing. I believe the board hasn't allowed it for emergency access lanes like this. It was to be used consistently. It's up to the board what they want to see. But I think we generally haven't allowed that in the past.
Correct. Just for emergency access, I believe, was our only ones in the past that we've allowed it. But I apologize. I thought we did, thought we did Cook's Farm with that, but maybe you pulled it back off the table. Okay. So let me ask you a question. If that has to keep, say, for all intents purposes, you have to pave that, you have to go back to Concom for that as well?
Yes.
What's your gut feeling on the first time around the block with that one? They gave it to you, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
For pavement?
Yeah.
No.
They didn't.
The pervious pavement was in the original submittal for both planning and conservation commission.
Okay, so...
That hasn't changed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question?
Sure, go ahead.
For the pervious pavers for Concom, did they approve that as emergency access drive only, correct? In reducing it because it's in a resource area or? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the passage.
I don't believe so. I'd have to look back at the order, but I don't believe it was emergency access only. It was...
Concom travel, I believe.
So on our plan, it's shown as emergency access drive only, but on Concom plan, it was shown as a full drive? So two different plans?
On the initial.
Just want to get clarification on that one, sorry. Trying to understand.
It just says access drive. It doesn't say emergency access drive.
So on the plan I have in front of me, it says emergency access drive.
Okay.
Do you have the one that was?
This one does too.
Yeah, it's blocked. Yeah, you blocked it up. You have a little block, emergency access drive. Reason why I'm going here is I just want to make sure, just in case you have to go down this road, that it's still feasible. Because if it doesn't work, then you're going to have a bigger problem because now you're going to have a footprint of a building built that you can't occupy the whole building because of something like this. Want to make sure that you do your homework prior to it, that's all.
Yeah, we'd have to go back to conservation.
You know where I'm going. I don't want you to have to build a building and then you turn around and you can only use 70% of it. The other 30% gone away. So make sure you kind of dial into things like this as an option, just in case if need be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Amy first?
I did have a brief conversation with the conservation agent and had her look up why, you know, there were the pervious pavers versus the impervious pavers. And she said, well, she was not actually the agent at the time of this, so she's kind of going off of what she could see in the decision. She did kind of say it was better for the mitigation because of the impact they've made on the wetlands. Having the pervious pavers is better for the wetlands and it was really more the impact to preserve the wetlands as much as possible.
Okay. And Mike, you had another comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, Mr. Chairman, I believe that access road in the back on one of the original designs, I think it had to do with the dumpster was being located back there too, so it was to be used for the trash truck. And I think the circulation was that the trash truck would exit through the Wendy's lot through there, the way it was laid out. I believe that's still the plan.
Is that still the...
Yeah, that's still the plan.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so with that, if we could gate that where the road meets to allow, you know, that to be open just for the trash disposal, that would be great.
So would he put a fence on a roller? What fence on a roller, like the roller handle fence? Could do that too?
Yep.
So actually a gate satisfies the...
Sure. Yep, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jen, you have?
Can I request a more similar TLE example to our exact site than the ones that you've given us? Because in all the research from the original application, which most of the examples you gave us were one-way parking or more parking spaces. You know, the two examples that were on the most recent report in Southeastern Littleton offer multiple options of where to go to park. They offer either that or two different approaches to the site. And we're still looking at a site here which only has one way in, one way out, forcing everybody to go into the same area to park, whether it's staff or drop-off. And so all the traffic is just forced into one direction. And so I still am, and on top of that, your own website has your specs for a new facility, 10,000 square feet, 40 parking spots, 5,000 square feet of playground. You've got a facility here that is, I'm assuming, 10,400 square feet because the footprint's 5,200, 33 parking spots and a playground that's much less than 5,000 square feet. So I'm still just questioning the adequacy of the building size compared to the spots and having like an exact example of where this has safely been executed in this extremely similar configuration.
Sure. Can I answer that question? Sure. So I just came from TLE Littleton. Littleton is very similar. Learning Experience Littleton has the parent parks, actually, take the reverse, go out. I am running the TLE Deadham, which is bigger than this daycare, 14,000 square foot daycare. Actually, it has only 26 parking spots. Stonefield, I think, did the traffic study for that one. So I have the TLE Deadham, actually, which is a 26 parking, 14,000 square foot, 20 kids more than these things, which is running fine, actually. I have TLE Milford. Actually, that has the one-way traffic. TLE Foxborough is almost similar like this. Learning Experience Foxborough is also very similar like this, actually.
Would be helpful.
So we have the less parking than, almost 30% less parking than this space and we have the 30% more space actually in Deadham, actually.
So we can, I think we've supplied the data for Littleton and Denny, but we can supply Milford and Foxborough as well if you like.
Do you have like a plan like this that could show the traffic pattern itself? Like, I think, Jen, that's kind of what you're aiming for, the flow of the traffic through the lot.
It's one long drive, but then you can split to go to two different decisions. So part of it is, right, like during your peak hours, giving parents the choice to, you know, they see parent A park over there, "I'm going to go park over there so that way my door's not hitting their door and we're not conflicting, you know, competing to, you know, our cars being parked next to each other and kids coming in and out at the same time. It's like just common courtesy daycare protocol. So like even Littleton, I don't think is a, maybe the number of parking spaces is more similar with the layout. I don't think...
Layout is also very similar, actually. Is this the front door of the daycare? You have the 12 parking spots, parent comes. And I think the traffic report shows that, like on the peak time, actually, you will have the seven to eight parents any given time. That's your peak capacity, actually, parents coming. You have the 12 spots, actually, you park, actually, front of the building, actually. And in this traffic management plan also, we showed that like all the front 12 parking spots are for the parents. Right side is for the staffs, actually. So it's pretty much same thing, Foxborough, Littleton. Even Milford has the one-way circulation. Deadham also has the similar six-one way. They do not even have the 12. Deadham has 26.
Yeah, the Deadham site looks really tight.
Yeah, so it's very similar, like actually that you have the front door of the daycare. Actually, you have the 12 spots. You come at the parent. You take down the kids, walk in, actually.
Okay, so it's just a matter of...
Maybe, maybe they can bring conceptual plans that are functioning right now for just to walk potentially if you can.
Yeah, I mean, I can... Yeah, I mean, I can, I think Googling it, but I think it's just a matter of like the actual monitoring and how to, we just don't want to see anyone get hurt. That's the whole point of this, right?
No, I absolutely agree.
You just don't want to see a kid get hurt.
I think this is very important for us also, right, as a brand, as a daycare, that's the business, right? We cannot do anything which will be put parent or kid in unsafe position, actually. Like, I mean, we will not be able to do the business if we do something that way, actually. So that's very important for us also, like the safety of the kids and safety of those things. But I, I do think like actually most of, like, and I have more than 25 of these daycares in various states. And I, I see this, it's very common like that actually you give the, close to the, your front entrance, the parent, the spots, actually, so that kid doesn't have to cross or, and generally you don't have more than seven, eight parents, actually, unless there's an event going on, some kind of a Valentine or the Halloween event, actually. You will not see more than six, seven parents, actually. And I think that's what the, when Stonefield did the, I think they did study the five, six of our daycares here. And I think that's what they put in that one, actually, the circulation and other things.
Okay.
The chair.
Sure.
Do you have, this, this site looks like it's very dependent on the employees to manage the flow of traffic. Is that consistent with your other sites? Are you going to have 33 spaces, whatever it is? All have to be monitored, the kids getting in and out have to be monitored, dropped off?
I don't think, actually, honestly, like my expectation on this site, probably you will always have five, six, 70 spots on this site. You will never see the 100%. I can, I mean, that's what I think town has to evaluate.
So you think
But I don't think, actually, absolutely, I don't think, actually, we will have a parking issue on this site.
You think one or two of the staff members out there monitoring the parking?
I don't think we will have
You don't even think they need that?
We will not. We, we never had it. We, not, not a single state we have that one, actually. We're, even in Dedham, actually, which is like 30% less than these things. We never have the staff outside, actually.
Okay. I just, I just had, actually, one more question. Can you show me on the drawing where the dumpster location is for this again? Because it's hard to read on my plan, but is it adjoining the Wendy's?
It's right here.
Oh, it's over there, okay. So he would have to just open that gate.
So he'd come in this way, dump there and come out?
He's going to go all through Wendy's?
Yes. And that's where the traffic circulation was from, from the beginning.
Wouldn't there be a fairly substantial hill behind that transformer in Wendy's to make that?
We have the grading that's
So he'll have to have a, you need to get through that too. Mike, that makes sense to you?
I, I
I know, I just, I'm just a little, you don't typically run through two different sites for a dumpster.
I think that's something that came up in the original, original design.
I'm not going to do.
The, if I may, that was how the original subdivision was designed with those access easements. And so that just for the oversized garbage, the trash vehicle, just seemed to be that the simplest, go in, back in, or actually, they're going to front load that?
Front load.
Front load, back up, and then go right out. But the idea of fence with wheels to roll it right out of the way, roll it back, lock it, is, I think, not a problem.
That works, they're pretty effective. Yeah, no, I know. I was just a little concerned about the two different elevations and two different sites with one dumpster company. And if they're not both same dumpster companies, to make sure that gate's shut every time, whatnot, you know, just adjoining sites like that, it's a little tight, that's all. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead. Willie.
Going back to the dumpster, the dumpster company is not going to do that. They're not going to get out, move a fence and close it. If that's going to open, it's going to stay open. And from the beginning, we, we never allowed that, that trash truck to go through Wendy's. It was going to take right through parking lot. And that was going to be an emergency access only for the fire department to come through Wendy's. It wasn't for the trash truck. I disagree with that. I disagree with that. And the, and the trash company is not going to open up a fence and get back in the, get out and then close it and then get back in the truck and go. They won't do it. And the other thing I want to, I'd like to ask is, is there any way we can get a no-left turn sign at the bottom of the, the driveway onto 140, right, right turn only?
I was going to ask Mike that because I don't know if that was part of the original submission, the subdivision way back when.
I don't
That was one of our big concerns, a left turn out of here. Do you recollect?
I vaguely remember. It might have come up, but I don't think it was a condition on the original subdivision at all. And that is state highway, so the state would grant them the access permit the first place.
Yeah, we were just concerned the amount of flow of traffic coming out of this one particular subdivision that potentially somebody could get
There was a discussion at the time, I believe.
Because there was, we'd also referenced lights there at one point, too.
Right, but I don't believe
Way back.
I don't believe there was a condition on the original subdivision.
No, no, I just, I couldn't remember if the sign was originally thrown in there. That's okay.
All right.
So there you go, Willie.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
On the dumpster? Just, that, that has been the site of the dumpster all along. And what the applicant is willing to do is actually create an electronic gate so that that could be opened and closed by staff. So the garbage people don't even have to deal with it.
Yeah.
So staff is assigned to do that, they press a button, it opens, they leave, they press a button, it closes.
Yeah. I mean
And we happen to have that as a condition.
Willie, how would that, I mean, that would prevent people from going up the wrong way, too. That's my fear, the connection between the two locks. Exactly. But not, not all the time. That's right. Well, that's something to figure out then.
Yeah, they'll have to come, they'll have to come while it's staffed.
While, while it's being staffed, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Through the, through the chair again. If that trash truck goes through Wendy's, does that have to change their site plan? Because now you're allowing something to exit through another site, like you said a little while ago. Would they have to come back?
The subdivision was designed that way with those access easements. So those are already existing access easements, just for that.
But that was for emergency access, not for trash trucks.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily emergency access.
I disagree with that. I'd like to see that.
The board has those way back in this, but I'll resubmit those. I can put my hands on those pretty quickly.
Thank you.
We can dig back into them, okay. I do like the electronic gate so nobody comes up through the Wendy's side into your site as well. Especially if a truck was trying to turn around and gets hung up or whatever, maybe. Okay. So anybody else have any comments? Questions? So, Amy, do you think we can put this on the next agenda if we get all the information?
Maybe we can. We have three, we have three public hearings, so this will be the fourth public hearing. Because, I mean, our next meeting is in three weeks. So it'd be on February 27.
Do you think, you think we can patch up all those? Brian, do you think you can make everything work on your end, too?
Yes, that's plenty of time on my end. Thank you.
Okay. And the traffic consultant, that's the only last one. I'd like to hear a response back from him. But can you make sure he's on for the next meeting and we'll try to review what was presented to us this morning?
Yes, I can. And I've already emailed with him this evening about it.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we can tie this one up. Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I make a motion to continue 505 West Central Street to, what's the date again?
February 27.
February 27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Greg Rondo.
Yes.
William David.
Yes.
Rick Bauer.
Yes.
Jennifer Williams.
Yes.
Beth Worthing, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Okay, good. Anybody have questions, comments? No? Okay. Make a motion to adjourn. A second? All in favor? Aye.
Greg Rondo.
Yes.
William David.
Yes.
Rick Bauer.
Yes.
Jennifer Williams.
Yes.
Beth Worthing, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
You add into that tool and toolkit, that is more and more violent and enables easier violence. My anecdotal experiences, so I don't know if this is representative, but in communicating with officers that I'm friendly with, the media that they're sharing is not the media. Typically, I'm usually, if I engage, if I see media around a police encounter, it's more often than not around something like this, you know, abuse of the police. What they're seeing more often is police officers who are threatened or injured or